Welcome to the post screening Q and A of Judas and the Black Messiah, which releases in theaters where available and on HBO Max, February 12. My name is Moira Griffin. I'm really excited to sit down today with director, co-writer, producer Shaka King, stars Algie Smith, Daryl Britt Gibson, Dominique Thorne, and of course, the incredible Akua Babu, who's the founder and executive director of the Pan African Film Festival. So without further ado, let's get started. So hello, really excited to have you guys on board and really excited for Pan African to be hosting this incredible screening. And I know we have a short amount of time, so I'm going to sort of rip through some questions. And first of all, you know, Shaka, this film is obviously, you know, to me, I don't consider it different, you know, from the other work that you've done. I consider it a growth, right? Like you were just, everything that you're doing, you're sort of growing and growing and growing as a director and sort of using your tools and I can feel, I can see it, right? All the tools that you've sort of, sort of built as a director, sort of just getting better. And so I wanted to sort of work back from the beginning and really like, what was the approach in terms of telling the story? And telling it with a sort of, you know, kind of like perspective? And also the visual perspective that you have as a director? You know, not just your approach to the writing, but your approach to the directing?
Well, the way in was always kind of baked into the idea that was brought forth to me by the Lucas Brothers. They came to me and they said, we want to make a movie about Fred Hampton and William O'Neill. And we envisioned it as The Departed set inside the world of Colin Telpro. And I instantly recognized that, you know, just understanding the industry, that that was the only way that a movie about Fred Hampton would be made. You know, not only because of his radical politics, but just, you know, as simple as the fact that, you know, Hollywood doesn't make, you know, big mid-budget features anymore, you know? And they certainly don't do so for, I mean, look, there isn't, you know, a Louis Armstrong biopic, you know? And he's far more well-known, you know, across the world. And I mean, there isn't, you know, even within the Black Panther Party, in terms of, you know, our own knowledge as black folks. I think we know a lot more about Huey P. Newton and Elders Cleaver and Bobby Seal than Fred Hampton. You know, I'm sure that everyone can kind of, like, a number of us in this panel probably heard the name Fred Hampton growing up. Maybe even knew that he'd been assassinated and that he was a Black Panther. But I certainly didn't know much about the way he lived until I started researching personally for this movie. And so you're coming from a, from a, coming at it from that perspective, kind of couching it in genre. It, it informed in a lot of ways, everything. Because once you make that decision, then you have to sort of go, okay, well then, what are the, how, how is this beneficial to the messages that you're trying to put forth in the movie and the politic of the film? Because by nature, it's a political film, if you do it correctly. So, you know, you had to think about, okay, well, I mistakenly, when I would, it wasn't a mistake, it was actually the right way to say this at the time to get it made. I would say it's a Fred Hampton biopic, Trojan horse and undercover crime drama. That was like the elevator pitch. And I found myself saying that over and over and over again. But it actually isn't what the movie is all. And never was the intention for that to be the case. Because for a number of reasons, I mean, look, Fred Hampton wouldn't want a biopic made about him. You know, he wouldn't want to be elevated above his comrades, right? So it was like, okay, well, what this really is, is an opportunity to put forth the ideas of Fred Hampton and the Illinois Black, the party at large. Putting, we can put forth those ideas in this kind of vessel, you know, slip the medicine, put the medicine in the apple sauce, as Jared Fred Hampton Jr. says. And so then it was like, okay, well, let's actually, it's kind of a good idea politically to, in some ways, centralize William O'Neill. Because in William O'Neill, by putting Fred Hampton right next to William O'Neill, you see even more so who Fred Hampton was by showing who Fred Hampton was not. You know, and it's this opportunity to explore, you know, these sort of two people who existed at the opposite end of the human spectrum, you know? One of the bravest people ever walked the face of this earth and a coward, you know, an ultimate coward, a socialist and a capitalist, you know? An individualist and a person who was a master of building coalitions. And so that was kind of, that was the way in. And, and in terms of the visual style, you know, we pulled from, I pulled from everything because that's, as you mentioned, you know, this is a continuation of the work I've been doing. And I've always pulled, ever since I saw Old Boy and discovered Korean cinema. Like, it was like, oh, I can, you can, so you can pull from everything and put it in one thing. And so I've been doing that forever and this was just an opportunity to do that. I mean, I think that's probably why that whole idea of like, even though it's not a biopic, but biopic, it has elements of biopic, so biopic, crime drama. Let's, let's see what, let's, let's merge those, let's see what that's like, you know?
I love that, I love that. I mean, because you're also then working, you know, in this space, biopic, you know, crime drama, how then do you deal with, you know, and what was your relationship like with, you know, Fred Hampton's family? With, you know, his son, with Mother Akua? Like, what was that like in terms of you telling the story and just sort of trying to be as, as honest, you know, about the portrayals of, of who they were, you know, who, you know, and what that relationship was? I thought it was so beautiful, you're like, your approach and the tenderness of that relationship. I thought that was a really, some really beautiful moments, one of my favorite moments, some of my favorite moments in the film.
Thank you. In terms of, you know, it was, it was a tough proposition to bring forth to them. Like, hey, I want to make a movie about this person you loved and I also want to centralize this person you can't, you detest, you know? But I just had to be very clear, like, A, saying that upfront, explaining my rationale why, hearing the concerns and frustrations they had about that approach. And then it took a year and some change of just conversations and building a relationship and building that trust. And we didn't really, we didn't move forward, you know, officially until the second week of filming. And, you know, how we got there is really a combination of a lot of people's efforts. But certainly, like Ryan, like people, like Ryan was not only the reason that, you know, Warner Brothers said yes, Ryan was also the reason that Fred Hampton Jr. said yes. And it had nothing to do with the fact that, you know, Ryan made this incredibly successful movie. It had to do with the person that Ryan is and, and just like, Fred Hampton Jr. had a very clear sense of who he was, the fact that they met in Oakland when Ryan was in film school at, like, in this marketplace where Chairman Fred Hampton Jr. was handing out flyers and they remembered one another, you know, like, from a, from a like 30-second encounter a decade ago, over a decade ago, probably. It was meant to be, you know? And, and they could recognize that it was meant to be, they could recognize the timing, they could recognize the rare opportunity that existed just now and, 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 and just the culture, the way the culture's moving, where you can get a movie like this made without having to sacrifice any integrity. You know, but it was a lot of, a lot of factors involved that I think eventually brought them to the table. And I can't think of, I mean, look, like, it was the dream, you know? It was the dream to have them, it was a dream to see their name in the credits. That was always, it was always like, yo, I want to, you know, I wanted to, I was, in my dream, like, because I was like, it'll be amazing if like, it was produced by Fred Hampton Jr. In my mind, like, when I first, you know, told Ryan, they're like, yo, like, we gotta sit down with them. But that was impossible, you know, it was impossible. And ultimately, it would have been, it would have made the process more difficult for everyone, including them, if they'd had to be that intimately involved. But they were on set, he was on set every day, you know, after that second week, he was there every day.
Wow, that's, that's great. And, and you know, sort of, what was it like also, kind of, you know, you obviously have a long relationship with Brian, right? You also are then bringing in, kind of going with the whole macro, right, with Charles King? How did that piece sort of come together? Obviously, it's sort of a family, but that doesn't always mean you're going to work together, right? How did, why was this project the one that sort of made it all work?
Well, Ryan and Charles, obviously, they, they had an agent-client relationship and friendship for years. But when Ryan started his company, he always planned on working with Charles and they were just finding, they were, I think, waiting to find the right project. And when this one came along, it just made perfect sense. And Charles came on board, I mean, like, probably less than a week after Ryan did, it was almost instantly. And Charles was like, I'm going to put up half the money so that we can have real control over this. And who else was going to do that, you know? Who else, A, has the ability and B, has the politic? You know?
Fantastic. And Dominique, you know, Daryl, Algie, when you guys see this script, right? And you, you know, you come to it, what did, you know, what comes across your mind? Like, what was the, was it the story, was it the characters? You know, did you have to do a lot of research? What was it about this piece of work that made you say, I really want to be a part of this project? And we can, we can go to Daryl first.
Um, I mean, first and foremost for me was knowing who the captain of the ship was going to be and knowing that that Shaka and the opportunity to work with him, again, I had done something with him before. And I just remember, like, having this sense of, he just has this energy and this love for not only the craft, but for the, for the actors and for, for an actor's opinion. And, and he's such a collaborator and he's a, he's a true artist. So if Shaka is directing anything, you know, I'm, I'd run to that, towards that opportunity. And also knowing that Shaka was, was going to be telling this story that is so important and that has not been told. Because you look at the way that, I wouldn't know anything about the Black Panthers if it was up to the education system, because they're scrubbed from the books. You know, I thank God for my, for my beautiful parents who educated me on them, or else I wouldn't know anything about the Panthers. And so the, the combination of Shaka and the material was an absolute no-brainer. And it's something that I feel so blessed to, to be, you know, asked to be a part of, because I understand the obligation of it and the history of it and the legacy and the importance of it. So, you know, it, for me, it was, it was, you know, tell me, when do I show up on set? Because there's no way I'm going to miss this opportunity to tell this iconic story that has been brushed aside in the, in the history books that we are, that they, you know, feed us growing up.
Love it. And Dominique, you go from skeptic, you know, you know, you're like the tough, you know, the tough cookie, right, throughout the whole, whole film, you know? How much fun was it to, to sort of play in that space, you know? What was that like for you?
I think the, the word that comes to mind is blessing, is honor. I think that we're all kind of on the same page when we say that, as much as you think you know, there's always more, more learning to be done. And so Harmon, to me, represented a way of doing that in a, in a, in a real, concrete, authentic way and an authentic lens that before my introduction to her, I didn't really have. So I thank her and I thank Shaka and the writers for really just creating a script, creating a character, creating an environment that could contribute to this story in a way that moved it forward and that was essential. Because I do think that learning of this project and learning that it was being done was one in the same with knowing that, you know, you had to at least make an attempt to contribute in a real way. So it's just an honor to know that I was able to attempt to highlight the voices of these women, because that, that is who she is. She's a composite of so many women that were there and that were active and involved in the Illinois chapter of the Black Panther Party with no limitation.
That's great. And then Algie, your character, he's, you know, he just breaks my heart because, you know, you want him to, to win all the way through, you know, especially at the end. And, and I'd love to know sort of what you were thinking, you know, what you were thinking in terms of how your, your character really transforms and who he becomes?
Yeah, I think from the very beginning, from the first day on set, just to kind of piggyback off of what Daryl and Dominique were saying about Shaka, he came to me the first day on set and we had a brief conversation just about the character arc. And I feel like that, to me, was very important, because we could have had that conversation any other time. But it was like, he just knows how to get to everyone and how to meet you where you are. And I feel like that conversation sent me on my study path for what I wanted to do. I didn't have a lot of study material for Jake Winters. I didn't have anything I can go back and look at. I didn't have anything I could read, I didn't have anybody I could talk to, which is kind of like the same for a lot of us that joined on. But I think for me, it was knowing the responsibility that I had with this role. Because I'm not sure about you, but I haven't seen another role or another film where a young black man is, has a machine gun to a police officer's face and he pulls the trigger. And so the responsibility of stepping into that role and knowing what that comes with, it was real heavy for me. But I also know that that's how the world feels. We need Fred Hampton, but the world feels like Jake Winters, where the world feels like that. It feels like that, it's just tired, you know? Everyone is just tired and it's like, okay, well, we have to stand up and we have to do something. Not saying you gotta go to those extremities, you just never know. So that was the real weight for me to take on.
And then Babu, when you, when you saw the film and you experienced it, what was it like, you know, for you? Especially sort of knowing that you were sort of a part of this history as well? What was that, what was that experience like for you watching the movie?
We've, we tend to forget over time, the complexity and the confusion and the lostness of these kind of brothers and sisters who did those kind of nasty deeds. And he, Shaka, he really did a good job of showing the complexity, the confusion, the lostness of, of these, these kind of characters. One of the scenes in my, as I watched the film, was when the FBI agent asked him about the three little girls, it was the three little girls, I think it was, I think it was three little girls in the bombing, oh no, asking about the 64 civil rights, the three people killed in Mississippi. And he had no clue. And the actor really, really caught that he's so out of it. And here, this, this story of the three civil rights workers being lynched and killed in Mississippi was all over the world, everywhere. And this brother was so isolated and so lost in his confusion, that he had no idea about that. And the FBI agent looked, oh, this is somebody we can use, because he's not plugged into that at all. So that really, really grabbed, it really, really grabbed me. Because that's the kind of people that were being used. And we have no idea about these people, you see them every day in the streets, but they're people who did not know, you know, everybody, that's like saying today, George Floyd, you'll be shocked to know that some people write Donald Crenshaw, didn't know about the story George, George Floyd, and that's the kind of person that they would use.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. And actually, like, something I just want to chime in on, you know, because I've actually, it's, you know, Algie and I haven't had a chance to, I haven't had a chance to talk with Algie or Dominique or Daryl on a panel like this, this is the first time we're getting a chance to do this. But like, I think a lot about Jake Winters and, you know, the person, but even more so, I think, the character in the film. And, you know, the, the, just like, contextualizing it and his actions in a lot of ways. And, you know, for me, when I think about that character and what he does and why, you know, we chose to show it, you know, I mean, to start, it's like, if we hadn't, they would have said we were sanitizing the history. So it had to be in the movie, right? And had to be acknowledged. But for me, it was also thinking about how, you know, as, as black people, we are hyper-aware, hyper-aware of the trauma that we ingest on a daily basis when we see ourselves, you know, murdered by the state, you know, in, on cellphone videos, you know, and, and on, in movies and on television. And we take that in and we talk about the trauma that we experience. And, and, you know, even when we look at the trauma that we inflict a lot of times on one another, you know, it stems from the trauma that we, it all stems from the trauma that we have experienced under American apartheid, you know? And so I wanted to show that, you know, sometimes that trauma isn't weaponized against us, it's weaponized against the state, you know? And the same way that, you know, quite frankly, our, our violence against us has to some degree been normalized, you know? I think that the way that you kind of create radical empathy in this world is normalizing, you know, just what that looks like when it's inflicted upon other people, you know? And so I know that that moment's going to be a moment that people talk about and, and because like Jake, you know, like Jake, like Algie said, you know, you, you don't, you've never seen that, really. You know, you've never seen, and you've certainly never seen that from someone, you know, with the kind of tenderness that Algie brought to that role, you know, and all the scenes leading up to that. And, you know, you hear how his mother, the character's mother speaks about him afterwards and how polite he was. And you've gotten that without even knowing a lot about Jake Winters, just from the way that Algie expertly gave him that kind of heart, you feel it throughout the movie. So I just wanted to show that, you know, like, this is a movie that's gonna, we're gonna, we as black people are going to experience a lot of trauma watching it throughout the process. But I think it's important for white viewers to experience the trauma of what it looks like when they, you know, feel that as well, when they experience violence, you know? Because like, yo, you know, we're all blood and bone and skin, you know what I mean?
And I think, just to piggyback just off of what Shaka just said, I think that's the importance that I, I make sure I mention in every interview as well. It's like, the fact that Jake was the vessel used to do that, the fact that Jake did that in real life, it shows so much towards what it's like to get beaten down to that point. Because he didn't start like that, he didn't start like that. He started out very excited, very happy, very joyful to serve. And then you just see everything going on around you and that beats you into a corner. It's like Tupac's dog life, it's just, it's the same thing, it's the same thing that you're saying. It's like, if you just constantly are getting beat down into a corner, when do you stand up? And I think that's why it's so, like, it was so perfect to be cinematically painted like that for Jake Winters to be that. But it's also real life, so it's kind of weird to say just cinematic.
I know, it's crazy, it's crazy because of that, it's so crazy, it's crazy.
That's the best.
I mean, I, I mean, honestly, you know, all of it is crazy. So that's, you know, that's the, but that's the, what makes history so interesting, right? And the, the hope that we don't repeat it, but we keep doing it anyway. So, you know, one of the things in terms of, for Shaka is, you know, sort of, talking a little bit more about your, you know, the way you approached camera is really like, can you talk about the opening sequence in the bar? And how you use camera to tell that part of the story? And like, what were your, what were your intentions there?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, the goal, you know, we knew that after everybody saw the trailers and all that stuff, that people would know that Bill O'Neill is an FBI informant, you're watching a movie about an FBI informant, they'll go into the theater knowing that. But you wouldn't necessarily know when he became one. So the idea was, just as the people in that bar don't know that Bill O'Neill is the guy that enters the space as an FBI agent, I didn't want the audience to know that he was, you know, I wanted the audience to think, because you're going to, you're going, most people don't know even what an FBI informant does. They hear FBI informant undercover movie, they think, okay, this guy works for the FBI, right? So the first time you see him, I wanted you to see him dressed like an FBI agent. And I wanted you to see him go into this bar and talk this way and present as an FBI agent. So you're like, wait a second, is this FBI agent? Like, and, and then when his, he gets headbutted and the hat's knocked off, that's the first time you actually see Lakeith's face clearly. Before that, you just see the iconography of the FBI, you know? And, and so you're, we're manipulating you as a viewer the same way that Bill O'Neill is manipulating the, you know, people inside that bar. So, you know, that was why we were behind him and that's why we kept the hat low. And, you know, that's why, like, Charlize Jones, our costume designer, she had to specially make that coat, because I wanted it to flap in the wind, you know? Like, like, I wanted it to be, and also I knew, I knew the kind of movie I was making and I've always felt like it was, it's important to end, to start a movie strong and end a movie strong. If you start a movie amazing and you end a movie amazing, you have a lot more latitude in the middle to like, you know, not always be amazing, you know? So I said, let me, I mean, I, I, the goal was to make the whole thing amazing. But I said, beginning's got to be crazy, you know? So when we wrote that beginning and I was like, okay, a knife's going through, like, it's got it, we got to start it, like, I remember seeing X-Men 2. And I remember the beginning of X-Men 2 with Nightcrawler's being like, this is how you start a movie, you know? Like this, like, I'm, I'm in now, you know? And it was like, how do we start this movie like X-Men 2, you know?
I love that, I love that. And you know, even like the way that you dress the streets with like the picture cars and like, down the streets, like how, you know, and always sort of keeping with the time period, you know? You didn't really, like, how much VFX and all that stuff did you have to do afterwards? Or were you sort of really sort of focusing in on like, these spaces and these things that you could actually change so you wouldn't have to, you know, scrub everything out at the end?
There were, we did, you know, we, we added VFX, you know, our incredible VFX editor, Jeremy. He, he did an, he just did an amazing job of just like, not, it being very subtle and very small, you know? Like, for example, the, the skyline of Chicago in the background. And when we do have those experiences, it's a small thing, but it's a, it's a subtle, small detail. You know, that elevated train in the background, but those train tracks were there, you know? But we want to set up that it's Chicago. And I think we had another train go by, but, you know, the attention to detail by all parties involved, you know, including Sam Linsec, Sam Linsec, our production designer, to make sure that that train car was a period train car, that they replaced it. They replaced the train that went by with a period train. All, you know, it all, there's no, you can't be too specific when you're making something that is a period piece. And the goal, as was the goal for all of us, was to immerse you in that period. Even if you're thinking about the, you know, today, which I think you can't help but watch this movie and, you know, and often think about the world we live in today. The goal was to, when those titles rolled, to keep you embedded in 1968, 69 as much as possible.
Love that. And then a couple, two more questions, and this one is for, this one question is for everybody, is what was the biggest challenge of making this film? And what lesson did you learn that you feel like is your sort of either, you know, life lesson, lesson as an actor, lesson as a director? You know, what was it that you sort of, like, how were you sort of transformed also just by the making of this movie? You know, to me, every time you make art, right, you're transformed in a different way. What was the thing that sort of affected you the most? And we can, we'll start with, we'll start with Dominique.
Sure, I think, I guess personally speaking, the biggest challenge, if that's the right word, that I think I felt initially was how, how do I play this woman that is not necessarily based on anyone in particular? But present her experiences or the experiences of all women, which is what inevitably feels like authentically. And I have to praise Shaka for being so collaborative and communicative. And it really was a conversation. I would tell him all the time, like, my only concern is that I don't want to feel like a prop. I don't want this woman to be a woman in the room simply for representation sake, you know? It's like, how do we make sure that this person is fully fledged and fully formed? So that there is, there is no like parading going on, you know? Because the women were very much on the ground and very much a part of the work being done. So I think just sort of leveling whatever perceived pressure is there with the fact that this is true to life. And as Shaka was saying, like, you can't help about, you can't help but compare it to today. And I think after a while, you sort of realize, oh, Harmon is, I know Harmon, you know? I've been Harmon at a period in my life. And just sort of, you know, relying more on that and relying more on the truth, which is easy to do when you're working with people like those on this screen and the rest of the people in the cast and the, and the team overall. So it was a phenomenal environment, you know, which helps to quell those. Um, so it was a phenomenal environment, you know, which helps to quell those things. And then I think the, the takeaway is just how amazing and how much work can be done and how strong and how reliable we truly are uh, collectively. That collective strength, that collective vision can take us so far and it has taken us so far. And it's almost insane. It's truly incredible to, to think about how much these people were able to accomplish the work, the legacy, the impact that they were able to have on their community and really on the world at large at nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. So, so young and have made an impact that we're, we're sitting down talking about right now. So I think that's a testament to our, our individual, but especially our, our collective capability at any age.
That's great. Daryl?
Um, I'd say that the, the toughest part of the entire experience is waking up every day, um, wanting to properly honor these women and these men of this party. Um, knowing everything that they've, um, they had to endure. Um, everything they fought for, um, everything they stood for, everything their legacy continues um, to build. Um, so wanting to, wanting to do it justice, um, it's, it's an incredibly tall task, um, um, because you, you know, it's, it's one of those things that you just can't afford to get it wrong. You know, um, as an actor, we, we sort of get to embody these uh, these, these roles, um, these uh, these worlds that we step into, but this is, you're playing with real people's lives. Um, so it's, it's not a game. Um, so, so the hardest part being wanting to honor that, um, the legacy um, um, in a proper fashion. Um, which is a testament to Shaka, who, who sort of is, is, you know, guides you in, in a way that makes you feel like you're doing the right thing and he'll never let you take a wrong step. Um, he's always going to, to be there, um, um, which is, which is an incredible thing to, to be a director, to do that. Um, and I think for the, the takeaway, um, is I really do hope that it, um, it opens up um, a tangible conversation that leads to tangible change. Um, I think we, um, you know, going back to what we spoke about earlier, just the uh, the scrubbing of, of the Black Panthers from the, the, um, the education system. Um, I, I hope that this, um, you know, sort of like reignites the um, the, the conversation about the party and what they actually stood for. Um, and what they continue to stand for. Um, because it, it uh, it's, it stays with you forever. This is not the type of role or project that I, you know, you get to walk away from and sort of put away and, and, and stash somewhere. It stays with you, um, and I'm, and I'm glad that it does stay with me the way it does. Because I wanna be able to pass education that I've learned and that I am continuing to learn every day about the Panther Party um, to my children and, and to, you know, into, you know, generations to come, because it's so important, um, and it's just not spoken about enough. So I just hope that the takeaway is that more conversations that lead to tangible change, um, happen.
That's great. Algie?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I was muted, um. Yeah, I just think that there were, there were there were two challenges for me. One of the challenges were, was not really having anything to um, really follow as far as like my guide to playing this real person's life um, and honoring Jake. But also that was the beauty of it too, because I guess there's just something about my essence that is able to just tap in, and I guess there's just something from the higher power, but like, that's the beauty that you can just tap in, you can create from there, you can still make it. Like, it feels like that was him, you know, it feels like that that's what Jake would've been like. And I think on the second hand, I'm a very sociable person, I'm a very loving person. I love, um, I'm all about the idea also of equality and justice. And I think the hardest part, one of the hardest parts for me was kind of sitting back and wondering if I go hard enough for what I say I believe in. And I think that's, that's something that really like, it really bothered me. It really bothered me on set a lot, it really bothered me when I was alone a lot, because it's like, I know in my heart that I don't put myself on the front line like the way that they did. And I know in my heart that a lot of people around me don't do that either, and we, and we say that we believe in certain things, but we, we, we don't put ourselves on the front line like that. But I also had to realize that my craft is me putting myself on the front line and that this is myself on the front line when I choose to do roles like this. When I choose to pass up on a role, then maybe is doing something way other than offering whatever, but I'm just like, no, because it doesn't speak to my heart. It don't speak to what I wanna say. It doesn't speak to what I wanna use to give God gave me to give to the world. And that's what I had to realize as well, so that kept me, um, that kept me in good spirits. And then also, I think the takeaway, I want, I just wanna agree with Dara. I feel like I just wanted to lead to tangible change. Tangible is a really, is the, is the really good word. There are tangible change and tangible conversation that we can have and that we can be able to see. Um, because we just saw Breonna Taylor die the same way that Fred Hampton died. And so, and that, that happened before we ended filming the movie. I mean, after that happened, after we filmed the movie, and so to deal with that and then to look back at that trauma, me and Dara was having conversations about that. It's just like, we see the exact parallels. And so I just hope the takeaway can honestly just be tangible change, but I think we're headed there. I think everyone, um, a lot of people in this generation are like-minded. I think it's just pushing out the old ideas of the old rot that's still in there. Uh, so I feel like we're on a good track though.
Um, and then, Shaka, that, it's a combination question for you, right? All of those things, but really, how did it change? How did this film change you as a director and as a writer?
Um, that was, that was actually what I was gonna speak to, so that's uh, that's perfect, um. The first part of the question, remember the first part of the question was again? The first, cuz it's
Uh, the first part, what was the biggest challenge?
Biggest challenge, biggest challenge. The biggest challenge, um, for me was synthesizing the vision that I had. The movie, the producers wanted to see the movie, the studios wanted to see the movie that Fred Hampton Jr. and Akunajiri wanted to see. And kind of finding those collective points of interest to make one film. Um, and that really, you know, that's the sort of direct answer, but when I look kind of broader, it was about learning how to trust. Learning how to trust, cuz you know, as a filmmaker, you, you know, at least me, I know that, I know how to trust my collaborators in the field, if you will. My crew and my cast, that's easy for me. It, it was a lot more intimidating knowing, you know, he- hearing horror, horror stories about making movies within the studio system. To learn how to trust, you know, my producers who had far more experience than I did and, and who, you know, have been a part of the studio system, you know, a lot longer than making movies within them. And the studio executives themselves, and you know, balance that with the demands that the family had. Like, it required me letting go to some degree of control. Um, and learning how to bring other voices into the, into the fray. And really discern when to be adamant about something remaining one way and when to be flexible. And not even for political purposes, but more so just to get the best out of their ideas, because they often had really good ideas, great ideas, that if I could just silence my ego and sort of get to the heart of what they were trying to talk to me about, it actually would be beneficial. And so that was a process that took the full scope of the making of the film. It wasn't something I learned in the writing. Wasn't something I learned in directing, was something I'd learned in editing. It's really been throughout. And in terms of what I've changed, uh, as a director or writer, you know, the, everything I did till now, you know, I think there may be a little bit newlywheeze I had some of this, but largely, largely, everything I did till now, um, was it always like, I thought cerebral, but not necessarily emotional. And that was something that I'd known about myself as a filmmaker, which actually has to do with who I am as a person, I think, in some regard um, for years. Uh, but this film, having to like, in a lot of ways, in a lot of ways, get out of my own way in terms of like style and kind of like the emphasizing style, uh, in moments where it was clashing with the ability to convey the emotion of the scene that was much more important. Learning how to do that was a real big, big, big part of my growth, I think, as an artist on this movie.
Um, very, that's a very, and, and I, I just, but I, I just wanna wrap up by saying, thank you all so much for joining us, but I'm gonna let Babu actually sort of close it out and really kind of talk to um, what it means to have this film play at the festival. Um, and just sort of, to sort of wrap this out, all out.
It means everything to have this kind of film in the Pan African Film Fest. This is the purpose of the Pan African Film Fest, to showcase these kind of wonderful films and spread the, the message about these films all over the world.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for joining us and good luck on your next endeavors.
Thank you.
Bye. Like, thank you. Judas and the Black Messiah, which releases in theaters where available and on HBO Max, February twelfth.
My name is Ayuko Babu, the executive director of the Pan African Film Festival, inviting you to our twenty-ninth annual virtual Pan African Film and Arts Festival, beginning February twenty-eighth to March fourteenth. Get your tickets today. Hope to see you there.